Alex Hannah.
Here.
Adelmo, Adelma Hanasco, is that correct?
Adelma Hanasco, here.
Okay. Tamara Bates. Jorge Bernal.
Yes.
Alma Castro.
Yeah.
Exeldre Trujillo de Martinez.
Yes, I'm here.
Andrea Hanby and Bernadette Ortiz Pina, excuse, correct? You have a call, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If we can all take a look at the agenda, it's very simple and straightforward. If there's any reason to change it, please let me know. All right, if I could have a motion to approve the agenda. I heard Jorge first. Exelda, would you like to second that?
Of course, yes, I second.
Okay, great. So do we need to do a roll call to approve?
Yes, sir, you have to have a roll call on every vote.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do that, please.
Okay, Alex Hannah.
Yes.
Adelma Hanasco.
Yes.
Jorge Bernal.
Yes.
Alma Castro.
Yes.
Exelda Trujillo de Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. So the minutes, we were just talking about that before we started the meeting. A big thank you to Elizabeth for joining us and doing these minutes from the last meeting, which were quite extensive. I did look through them. I hope everyone had a chance to read them. It was refreshing to see all the commentary and all the really good brainstorming we did. And of course, the public comments were great as well, very interesting, great discussions all around. I noticed one thing on page four, towards the bottom, second to last paragraph. It's a bit of an awkward phrase. I don't think I would have said it this way. If we do feel we can make recommendations, it needs to be something with a good process or something like that. I wouldn't have said to be something procedural. I don't think.
I can listen to, I can listen to the tape and see.
But anyway, just for the record, I think I said something along the lines of, if we make recommendations, it needs to be something with a good process.
I can listen to the tape, and if that's the way it is, I'll change it.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else notice anything on the minutes that they thought was a mistake or want to correct or misspellings or anything? You're good, Elizabeth.
I've been doing it a while, but thank you.
All right.
Thank Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, yes. Thank you. Any comments on the minutes or corrections on the minutes? All right, if I can get a motion to approve those.
I shall move.
Okay, Jorge, a second?
I'll second.
I heard Alma there first, so Alma second. So let's go ahead and do a roll call to approve the minutes.
Alex Hannah.
Yes.
Adelma Hanasco.
Yes.
Jorge Bernal.
Yes.
Alma Castro.
Yes.
Exelda Trujillo de Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. So we are switching now to matters from the public, but I do want to just sort of frame it a little bit for the public because I'm sure some of the people here attending were here two weeks ago with us, some are not. So I just want to clarify a little bit what we're talking about. The Arts Commission was asked to make a recommendation on a temporary temporary measure for, to deal with the box at the obelisk site on the plaza. And I want to emphasize that it was, it is meant to be temporary and that we do want to hand this off to Chart and the process with Chart, which we're hoping will start soon, that the Chart process is a process that will enable many voices to be heard for a very diverse group of people to weigh in on a longer term, a longer, I don't want to say the word solution, a longer term understanding of how we use the plaza. So we are not tasked with that at all. We are only tasked with a temporary recommendation for the next couple of months. Part of that, what we were tasked for was, could be seen as a beautification, quote unquote beautification. My sense from this group and the Art in Public Places folks that joined us two weeks ago, that this group has very little interest in anything about beautification. This group is primarily interested in providing context for the next couple of months on the plaza. Context for locals and tourists alike. If you walk on the plaza right now, you see a white box. If you've never been to Santa Fe and don't know Santa Fe history, you would have no idea what that white box is or what it's for. So I think that, I think I can safely summarize that from two weeks ago, after much discussion and brainstorming, that we have, we want to provide a very simple recommendation to the city, to the city manager and the mayor that provides context to tourists and locals alike. So with that, I will hand it over to the public comment period. And then following that, we will discuss if we feel like we can make a recommendation to the city manager. So Armenia, if you want to go ahead and anybody, anybody in the public that wants to say anything further, I would recommend a minute maximum, one time per person. And I look forward to hearing any further comments. I know we, we heard a lot of important things, and I think that this group, two weeks ago, actively listened to folks from two weeks ago, and we look forward to actively listening right now.
Chair, if I can propose something, I received a lot of comments to my, on my phone, office phone, as well as to my email, that they felt one minute was not adequate and requested that it be two minutes, like they do at city council meetings. Is that a possibility or is that a no for tonight?
You know, again, I think this, the process of re-engagement is a very narrow process. We are not Chart. We are not trying to be Chart. We are not trying to take over the process of Chart. Chart is going to enable, from my understanding, and please Pauline, correct me if I'm wrong, is going to enable the public to weigh in quite intensively and over a good period of time on the plaza. Pauline, do you want to explain a little bit about where we are with Chart and what that process will look like?
Sure, Chair Hannah, thank you. So yes, the Chart initiative will be a 12-month process. It is meant to be community engagement throughout the city in basically three type of venues or avenues. Convenings, whether those are three meeting sessions, one-on-one interviews and/or surveys. There's also temporary art activations throughout the city that will happen, and then a cultural history series. And this will be an iterative process with, led by the consultant team. So there will be a lot of opportunity for input. And then that will culminate with a community solutions table, which is self-selected. So if you participated in the three convenings, three meeting convenings, you self-select if you would like to further join that solutions table. And that will look, that body will look at all the data that has and stories that have been collected and then make recommendations to the governing body. And then our hope as Arts and Culture Department is that after the 12 months is over, that we will continue to support these ongoing conversations because we know that we, that's building a base, and we want to make it sustainable and keep these conversations going.
Great, great. And I have, I have great hope in that process and in everyone's engagement with it. Do you have any updates, Pauline, on the timeframe?
It's in the procurement process, and that's all that I know at this point.
The procurement process to hire the consultant?
Correct. And that's all the way through contract signing, which will then have to go through governing body. So at that point, it will be publicly noticed.
Great. So hence the desire to have something for the next couple of months.
Temporary, yes.
Yeah, temporary. All right. So given, given all that information, Armenia, and the fact that there's going to be much more further engagement in a broader sense, I'd like to go ahead and leave this alone at one minute a person.
Sounds good. I did my due diligence to ask.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
So we are going to get started with public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand function. I do have two people right now at this moment, so if you would like to use the raise hand function, I will call on you in the order that I received the raised hand. I am going to start, well, I was going to start with someone, but it looks like he put his hand down. So I'm going to start with Al. See, if you'll please state your full name for the record. And I am now putting you to allow to speak. Please unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alessandra Candalaria. I'm a community member here. My families are from New Mexico, going back into time in Memorial, and I really appreciate this opportunity. First and foremost, on June 17th of 2020, Mayor Allen Weber called for the removal of genocidal monuments on Santa Fe slash Oga Pogay property. And his words were, "It is time to stop self-reconciliation in our future. We need to listen to the people, return our community-wide conversations, and keep the peace." We have a shrink from fear in this moment, and I couldn't agree more. Where there have been attempts at erasure, which genocidal monuments are, there need to be representation. So point-blank period, at the end of the day, in, you know, 1970s activists called for the removal of these monuments, and today we're still here, still calling for the removal of these monuments. This land, this property, and this opportunity must be returned to indigenous peoples. They are the only ones who should be deciding what happens with this going forward. And every single one of us is held accountable to uphold that moral obligation. Every single one of us in positions of power.
Alessandra?
Yeah.
You are, your time is up at the one minute. I'm so sorry.
Alessandra, thank you so much for your comments.
That's, I'm going to be moving on to Melissa. Melissa, I'm going to give you, take you allowed to speak, and you now have the floor, and your one minute will start.
Armenia, would you ask her to give her full name, please?
Yes. Santa Fe, New Mexico. I am a lifelong resident of Santa Fe.
Melissa, can you give me your name again? You cut off.
Melissa Mascarenas.
Thank you.
I am a lifelong resident of Santa Fe. Five generations of my family are still alive and living here and working here in Santa Fe. It is quite alarming that this committee would allow public comment from people that actually destroyed the 150-year-old obelisk. What has happened has been a criminal action, what they have done. There are soldiers' remains that are buried beneath that obelisk that were destroyed. No adobe windows, native plants can ever cover up what has been done to our beautiful city. The best thing for us to do is to repair what has been destroyed so that the soldiers who remain underneath that obelisk can continue to rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. I'm going to move on to Artemisio.
I think this is our youth poet laureate, is it not? Well, I welcome the city's youth poet laureate to the floor.
I'm going to take you off of mute. Oh, where did he go? There you go. I'm taking you off of mute, and you now have the floor for one minute.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I'm the, like, past year's youth poet laureate.
Oh, are you, are you retired now?
I'm retired now, yeah. My name is Artemisio Amerikova. I just came back from a run, so I'm a little out of breath. I want to make sure I can make this. I wanted to just respond a little bit to what was just said, I think, by Melissa, and apologies if I'm getting your name wrong. I'm also of, like, a family and a heritage that has history in New Mexico. And I think that it's very dangerous when we use that and we leverage our identity as Nortenos to harm our indigenous relatives and brothers and sisters. And you mentioned that this is a beautiful city. I love my community. I love my home. But Santa Fe is not a beautiful city. Santa Fe is a colonial name given to a city built on stolen land and now currently controlled by an occupying US authority. It is a gentrified, brutalized city, and at its center was a death shrine celebrating murderers. That is not beautiful. That is not worth maintaining. That is not a culture that I want to partake in. And so I would just say that all of you and everyone here today has a responsibility to change what exists and not ignore what does.
Thank you, Artemisio.
Thank you.
Okay. And next, I'm going to move on to Lacey Michaels. Lacey, you now have the floor for one minute. If you could please state your full name.
Thank you. My name is Lacey Ann Michaels. I actually have a question rather than any kind of statement. Beginning of this meeting, Mr. Hannah was talking about, we're not, or you're not concerned so much with the beautification of Santa Fe, but the, whatever the temporary sculpture or piece is that is instilled in, at the plaza would have to fit the context. I don't really understand what, what you mean by context. And that is my question.
Thanks, Lacey. I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer that. We're, we're not tasked with trying to install something brand new on the plaza. We're tasked with dealing with the box as it is now, which is a temporary feature. And the original request from the city was basically to make the box not look so ugly for tourists. I mean, I'm simplifying, I'm simplifying, but for the sake of this conversation so that you understand.
I understand.
And so what we're trying to do is get beyond just making the box pretty and giving the public, tourists and locals alike, some context for what is there. That's all, that's all I think this committee will, this commission will recommend, something along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your asking that to clarify, because I know a lot of people, folks don't have the full context of what, of what this is about. So thank you for asking the question.
Certainly.
Okay, with that.
Mr. Chair, just one thing real quick. This is Erin McSherry. So for anyone on the phone, city attorney. Just usually during public comment, it's just comments without questions because we don't want to treat any of our public speakers any differently. And if we get into the question and answer, this would be a very different session than my, what would be on the.
So no more questions? That's it?
So what you can do is note questions, and then if in your discussion.
Then answer them later, if I want.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you for babysitting us, and we will get it right.
I understand that questions can be.
I'm so glad to answer that question. I would have answered it either now or later. So thank you, Lacey.
Thank you, Erin. With that, I'm going to move on to Madeline, Madeline McKean. Madeline, I'm going to allow you to speak. You have one minute on the floor, and if you'll please state your full name.
Hello, can you hear me? I am Madeline McKean. I am a somewhat long-term resident of Santa Fe. Been here almost six years now, and I think that it's just very silly to give this to the Arts Commission, to be honest, when this is, should be completely up to our native relatives to handle. It, to me, because I'm originally from the South, it sounds like someone saying, hey, let's make this Confederate monument pretty for tourists. There's nothing pretty about it. And I definitely am just here to call attention to that. It should be definitely our native relatives' decision and not ours. Thank you.
Thanks, Madeline.
Thank you, Madeline. I'm going to be moving on to Kibera. If, I'm going to allow you to speak. Give me one moment. Let me reset the clock. And you now have the floor for one minute. Please state your full name.
Hi, I'm sorry, I logged in on my work email. This is not related to work. My name is Leah Potterweight. And I am relatively new to the area, but I want to just echo what's already been said and really emphasize and encourage that these decisions be made by our indigenous brothers and sisters here in Oga Pogay or Santa Fe, whether it be to provide context or not. I think that that's where the leadership needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I will be moving on to Noel. Noel, you'll now have the floor for one minute. Please state your name for the record.
Oh, it looks like you let up.
Noel Hutton, is that who we are with? Okay.
Yes, Noel. Yes, we can hear you. Right. We could hear you. Now I can't.
Noel, are you there?
How much is Noel?
Oh, I'm sorry. Noel, are you still there? Noel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to come back to you. Let's see if we can. Oh, wait. Noel, I'm gonna try to come back to you. Give me, give me just a moment. I'm gonna lower your hand. If you'll raise it again, I will try to get you back on. Let's see if we can fix your connection. Chris, you now have the floor for one minute.
Chris, welcome.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for your service. I'm Chris Jonas, 20-year resident of Santa Fe. I'm a team member at Little Globe. And we've been, we've had the wonderful fortune of working with residents across this town, hearing their stories. And one thing I want to say is that, you know, one of the things we've, we've experienced is how much heartbreak there is around the loss of heritage, the different ways that we hold this town and, and the plaza itself. And it does strike me that a beautification process or an artistic process, even a temporary one, is one that dishonors the heartbreak that's existent in our town right now. And it's out of order. It strikes me that it's important for us to hear each other first, and then as a community, make a decision about what we do. And so I would strongly urge the city to, to think about that order. I'm not sure what we do about the box in the middle, middle of the plaza. Speaking just for myself, it would be nice to just remove it for now and wait a later time.
Chris, I apologize. Your time is up, and I have to follow the rules.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chris.
And next, I will be trying Noel again. Noel, let's see if we can get your connection working. And I think I lost Noel. There you are. Okay, can you hear?
Yes, I hope my internet doesn't cut out again, but my name is Noel Hutton. I am a recent guest on this land, and I am appalled at the blatant lack of leadership to meaningfully address this very clear symbol of genocide, even in a time where near and far racist monuments are coming down with broad support. This is not new territory. You have the opportunity to be leaders in standing up against the genocide of indigenous peoples. By the same token, you are at risk of holding tight onto the most despicable acts ever committed here and across Turtle Island. The failure to center the demands of native peoples on this issue is a brazen continuation of colonial domination. It is absolutely shameful. We can call it art. We can try to wrap it up in a pretty bow, but we know that is not the truth. Center the recommendations of indigenous peoples. History will look back upon your decision and have the courage to do what's right.
Thank you, Noel.
I'm going to now be moving to Telha Yoga Info. You now have the floor for one minute. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Elisha Kapoor. This has nothing to do with Nigel Yoga. Sorry about that. And I'm the co-executive director of Wiseful New Mexico on Siler Road off of Aguafria. We were tagged in this meeting by someone on the commission. And I just want to share when Wiseful creates art in the community, we do so to bring awareness and to support the voices of our community. In this process, our voices are not the ones centered or, and we're not even the ones really leading it. So we work closely with our community to create the art, and in particular, our indigenous community, to consider something even temporary without them being the people that are leading it. And deeply, and people being deeply involved in this culture is not one that's contributing to the healing of our community or is not a value that Wiseful even holds either. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We love Wiseful.
Thank you. And next, I will be moving to Valerie Wrangle. Let me get the timer set. And you now have one minute for those to speak on the floor. Please state your full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Valerie Wrangel. I'm a resident of Santa Fe. And I'd just like to say that I would envision the, instead of a beautification process, I would like to see on the panels an explanation of the history with diverse perspectives. I think that the city could include a QR code to a page with references and cited resources. It could have videos with perspectives from indigenous populations, from different organizations and community voices included. And this is an opportunity for the city to tell the truth, just blatant and honest. That transparency, I believe, will lead to responsibility on the behalf of Chart to do the right thing and remove this controversial monument. I think that this monument should be treated like a Confederate statue with the same type of criteria scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Valerie.
Thank you, Valerie. And with that, if no one else would like to speak, I'll give some, everyone a chance to raise their hand, just in case. Oh, and we have more. Okay. Next will be Miko. Miko, you now will have one minute to speak. Please state your full name.
Hi, my name is Miki Co Ellis. I am an educator at New Mexico School for the Arts. I've lived in Santa Fe for about eight years now. And I just want to echo some of the things I've already heard that there really can't be a beautification process. We need to center indigenous voices and the ask that's already been made rather than beautification for tourism. And if that means, you know, leaving something for a while that, that shows the truth and honesty of what's going on in our community, then so be it. But I agree that this monument needs to be completely removed, along with any of the other monuments that have already been asked to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I will be moving on to Virgil. Virgil, you now have the floor for one minute. Please state your full name for the record.
He's on mute.
Okay, let's go back again. You ready? Can you hear me now?
Give me one moment. Let me restart your time for you. Okay.
Okay. I, I challenge all you there to, to speak for one minute. I guarantee you cannot speak to for one minute. That's unequal treatment to the people that are speaking. Now, it's, look at a lot of, it looks like you have a lot of people from the Red Nations and Three Sisters activists here tonight. They're in numbers, but they don't represent the city and how they feel. But they are in numbers. They got the word. The mayor has made, on many occasions, stated to the general public that the chart will make recommendations to the council. So now he has publicly retracted this statement, has he? He has not. He has not retracted this statement. He needs to retract the statement that the chart, there's going to be another committee to make this decision. He told the people that the chart would make the decision, and now it looks like he's not. So he's in a line, and if he wants to correct it, he can come out publicly and say it. I recommend that the divarga statue be placed on top of the pedestal. Talking.
Virgil, I apologize that your time is up. I have to follow the.
Virgil, will you finish that last sentence for us, please?
I was going to say that I recommend that the divarga statue be placed on top of the pedestal. You have that already. It's not going to cost you any money.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we understood your last comment.
Temporary fixes.
Thank you, Virgil.
Thank you, Virgil. And next, I will be moving to AY is the name on here. Let me just a moment. Let me reset the clock. AY, I'm allowing you to speak. Please state your full name for the record, and you have one minute.
Hello, my name is Ajani Yipah. I'm from the Pueblo Hamas. I'm indigenous to these lands. And I want to echo again just what many people have spoken, that it is very clearly a racist monument to us as indigenous people, the first people of these lands. There's a very dark history in that plaza. in that plaza that a lot of, you know, a lot of settlers want to, you know, change the narrative of. But we're here, we're still alive, and we're here to tell you that we remember that history, that it deserves to be stated and spoken, and the city should acknowledge that history. And the statement, and to not celebrate racism, the statement about treating this as a Confederate statue, I agree that this is on the same, same level. And so I want to just leave my statement for you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Next I'll be moving to Carla. Carla, you now have the floor for one minute. Please state your name for the record.
Well, it looks like we have Shannon.
Oh, there we go.
Hello? Yes. Hi, this is Carla Moya. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Carla Moya, and I'm a Spanish descendant of Santa Fe. And I want to just say that I feel really sad that everyone feels that the Spanish people have created the genocide that had occurred 500 years ago. But when we use the word white supremacy terrorist, or even the Confederate, we have to be careful because since the removal of both statues of Don Diego de Vargas and the obelisk, a lot of us who live here and are productive here have been targeted and have been called white terrorists, or terrorist, or white supremacist. But people need to know that my family was attacked by a white supremacist, and my aunt was killed in El Paso, Texas because of a white supremacist. So we need to use these words wisely and cautiously, because when you're referring to someone with that kind of stature, it can be very dangerous. The other thing is, I feel like we need to focus on both cultures, both Hispanic. Wait, but I want to say is we need to put something that represents all cultures, Hispanic, in Native American and Anglo, not just the Native Americans.
Thank you, Carla.
Okay, and next I will be moving on to Shannon. Shannon, I'm gonna give you the floor. You have one minute to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Shannon Leonetti, granddaughter of Ernie Mills, longtime news reporter in Santa Fe. My mom was born there about the last time, I think, that the, or maybe the first time the city had promised that the statue would be taken down. Yet, here we are over 50 years later, and it still has not been taken down. Although it's now my understanding this meeting is not even about the statue coming down, as much of what to do with this box. And it seems to be that it is centered around tourist views, and I hope that everybody in this meeting considers putting indigenous leaders to lead and make the decisions on this, rather than the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And next I will be moving on to Hernan. Hernan, I'm going to give you the floor for one minute. Please state your name for the full, for full name for the record. Thank you. Hernan, are you there?
Sorry, I thought it was. My name is Hernan Gomez Chavez, local to Santa Fe, child of immigrants. I'm echoing a lot of what's been said, even something that Virgil said, which I don't necessarily agree with everything he was saying, but that the mayor is just taking all the responsibility off of his hands, and just diverting the process, and it's becoming more of a beautification process for tourism. But if, if we're really about truth and reconciliation in this town, then we have to take responsibility, and that goes double for the mayor. So with that, that's all I really have to say, and we should really place indigenous people in everything that's going on. And if the chart process is supposed to be working, it doesn't really seem like they're doing their due diligence by actually including the voices that have been hurt, have this trauma on their shoulders. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
And I believe that was our last public speaker. Would anyone else like to speak before I move on to written comments? Give me just a second to raise your hand. There we go. Dylan? Dylan, you have one minute to speak. Please state your name, full name for the record. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I am from Pueblo, and I lived, lived here in Santa Fe for 10 years, and I went to the school at the Santa Fe University of Art and Design. And I do believe that we should definitely be listening to indigenous people, especially Tewa people, who are the original stewards of this land, and I think we should be listening to them as to what to do with the plaza. Most plazas in Pueblos don't even have anything in the center, and that place is a place where people can come together as a community. So I second that everyone should definitely be listening to indigenous people for this issue.
Thank you so much, Dylan.
Thank you, Dylan. Just a moment, let me, okay. Next will be Solavad. I'm giving you permission to speak. You have one minute. Please state your full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Solavad Roybal, and I am from New Mexico. I am of mixed descent. And I'm really concerned about this from many different perspectives, that yes, it doesn't seem that this is the right space for this issue to be discussed. But I also have to question why there is no one on this arts commission who is of, from what I can tell, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, who is of Pueblo descent. It seems like this commission is made up of a couple people who have long-term, who are from here, you know, who grew up here, and many people who are transplants, which is important to have many voices. But I don't see any Tewa voices here. And from my understanding, there seems to be several seats on this commission that have not been filled. And I'm wondering why the mayor has failed to appoint more people to this commission when it is his responsibility to make sure that the seats are filled, and that, that, that the commission really is diverse. Diverse in all different ways, and if we're talking about this issue, we need to have a full representation of all voices in this community. Not majority people who have moved here.
I apologize. Thank you. And I believe that is our last public comment that has their hand raised. One more second for anyone else who has not spoken to raise their hand. And if not, we will be moving on to written comments.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone who, who came to speak. It's, it's very important to the process, and we appreciate you. So go ahead, Armenia, and go ahead. Let's read the written comments that were brought into, brought to us.
Okay, give me just a moment.
Armenia?
Yes.
Can you just email those to me?
The written comment? Yes, of course. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll include the, the written in the packet that gets uploaded from the final. Thank you. So this is, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. Erin, I read this verbatim, right?
Mr. Speaker, or sorry, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Tapia, I am not familiar with reading the public comment. We generally just include it in the packet, so I would do whatever you generally do for this committee.
It can be attached.
Yeah, it can be attached.
Minutes, which is the way we usually do it, unless the chair wants it to be read out.
Armenia, how, how much do we have there in terms of written comments?
About three paragraphs, not huge paragraphs, but three paragraphs.
I like, I would like them to be read, because I think it'll be informative to us.
Yeah, there's only, there's only one that I have, so I'll read that.
Okay, great. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. So this is from West is the name that I have on there. This was written on Wednesday, May 26th at 11:39 AM. And it says, "Hi, Santa Fe Arts Commissioners. My name is West. I'm a filmmaker, and I've lived in Santa Fe since 2012. David Scheinbaum might, might remember me as the director of Meow Wolf Mini Doc about Mickey Ray. Hope you all are doing well. I'm writing because I heard about the potential plan to beautify what is left of the Soldier's Monument, and it worries me. I totally get that it doesn't look great right now, and it is the centerpiece of the plaza, so I do understand the desire. But it seems to me that this beautification project would likely cause more unintentional harm than intentional good. I am a white settler and gentrifier in this place, which, to be honest, is only something I've only really come to understand in the last year or so. It has been a very humbling year, and I think the most important thing I've learned is that just because I don't understand the harm I am causing, doesn't mean I'm not causing it, which makes a lot of sense. Seeing as we all are unfortunately swimming in the waters of a white supremacy culture that protects white people from seeing the harm we cause, I don't claim to be an expert by any means, but as it seems to me, the best remedy to this is, that I have learned so far, is to listen to indigenous voices of those who do not benefit from the progress of settlers and are harmed by gentrification. As a white settler, I don't really think my opinion on the obelisk matters. However, I would like to do my part to minimize harm where possible. So I would like to share that I support Three Sisters Collective and fully trust their voice on this matter. I know Three Sisters Collective has made statements regarding their concerns about beautifying a painful genocidal monument, and have requested that the chart process be followed before any beautification project begins. I am asking that you listen to and honor their request. What's left of the monument is ugly, but so is its past that it represents. Personally, I think prioritizing listening to indigenous voices over making the plaza look nice for tourists would be the most beautiful option. Thank you for taking the time to read and consider, West."
Armenia, you just needed to read faster to stay within a minute.
I'm sorry. Enunciated every.
No, you did a great job. Thank you.
Um, actually, I think there's one more written comment that I am missing. Give me just a moment.
There was one that came in via email that I was CC'd on.
Yes, I am very sorry. I was out of the house this afternoon. Let me see if I can find that.
Burl Brechner.
Yes. Okay, there we go. Okay, all right, this one is from Burl Brechner. And this was written on Tuesday, June 1st at 5:05 PM. And it says, "Dear Mr. Hannah, I hope you do not mind me using your business email. Since there is no direct email that you have via the city that I find, sent a short written comment on this topic via the Prime Gov system to your commission prior to the May 20th meeting, but don't know where that was or considered. The plaza was designated, is designated 1960 by the U.S. National Park Service as a national historic landmark. The plaza was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1966. City officials, including the mayor, have the ownership, ownership of the Soldier's Monument obelisk is in question and needed to be sorted out. If your commission hasn't been informed in detail on the implications of these facts, wouldn't details on such matters, the limitations, conditions, impacts, or restoration requirements regarding destroyed items, et cetera, that may be in place due to such designations or questions be critical to know that before time is spent on any plans or suggestions for art or design reading regarding the monument and the plaza. Respectfully, Burl Brechner, Santa Fe."
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that was our last one, unless anyone was aware of any that came in that I missed. Okay, I think we are good. We have someone raising their hands in the public chair. I don't know if you're ready to close public comments, or if you want to hear from them.
Well, we, yeah, but that was the order we were going in, so I think we better just stick with that. So, yeah, let's go ahead and close that down. Thank you, everyone, again, for your comments. Just a couple things. Yes, there are some empty spots on this commission. Yes, we would like the mayor to appoint some new commissioners very quickly. We also have indigenous voices on both the commission and art in public places. Burl's comments are important also, I think, to contextualize the issue that it is more complex than just a city issue because of the National Historic Registry, and that is part of what will go forward in the process with Chart. I sincerely hope that Chart will have a strong indigenous presence in, in the discussions going forward. That is its purpose. And, and I look forward to that process for the city. Commissioners, I, I put the floor to you to make any comments about what, how you'd like to move forward. We're on action number si, number six, which is action item, discussion and recommendation of temporary art installation. And as I said two weeks ago, our recommendation could be to not make a recommendation, and that's okay, too. So, could any commissioners go ahead and raise your, use your little raise hand symbol? And first ones I see, I will call on, and we can have a discussion about this. Yeah, yeah, Exilda, I see your real hand.
Well, I don't see a little hand down there. Alex, you requested that we send in in writing or communication with you our suggestions, right?
Well, yes, I mean, we, everyone, everyone has had lots of opportunities, I think, to think about this and talk about it. And I think now we're looking at trying to coalesce. I, I, my sense is that we all have, we're all coming to a fairly strong consensus of something very simple, but with some text and contextualization to go there on the plaza. But I want to, now that we've heard more public comments, I want to hear again from anybody, any more reflections about perhaps the process and our role in this, and if you feel it is appropriate for us to, to make that kind of recommendation.
Well, I did submit something in writing to you. I think you read that. You responded. Did anybody, did anybody else on this commission send in anything that you read and took into consideration?
Yes, I mean, I think, go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, Chair Hannah, if, if there were any written communications, I think they should all be read into the record, because we, we can't have those conversations outside this meeting.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, they'll have to, each one will have to be read into the record, like she's, like Erin said.
Yeah.
Or you can, or you don't discuss them, or you can't discuss them.
Right.
Chair Hannah, Ms. Martin, the "or you can't discuss them" part is not accurate. They absolutely need to be read into the record.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Exilda, I, I don't know, I don't know what, how, how we want to handle this. Do you want, you can read your, you can read your written comment out loud. I, I think it was rather lengthy, or I don't know how we want to proceed.
I would rather that you, well, if you want to put it into the record, that you read every comment that was submitted. Do you have to identify which commissioner submitted each one?
Chair Hannah, member Exilda, it's just that this conversation has to occur at this meeting, so if any conversation happened outside the meeting, it needs to be now put into the meeting.
Well, it wasn't exactly a conversation.
Exilda, let, let's go, let's step back for a second. What, what is your, what is your take on what the recommendation should be based on what you've heard so far?
Well, I think I included that, and I'll be very brief, because it was lengthy, that we not do anything except provide on the plaza, if we're gonna keep it a four-shi, a four-sided structure of some kind, that we provide a narrative that is, begins from the installation of the obelisk to the very beginning, down to when it was destroyed, destructed, or whatever, in English, in Spanish, and in Tewa or Toa, some Native American dialect, on three sides, and, and just factual, just a factual narrative that came down and to tell the, tell exactly what happened, the truth, the facts as we know it, not anybody's opinion, that could be the prose or poetry. And on the, on the fourth side, that we would, could somehow include public comment, that it would be opened up to the public to submit a very brief, maybe 25, 30 words or less, and we would somehow display all the comments from anyone who would like to say something about this issue. And we could, I don't know how that would work, but now we have all kinds of And we could, I don't know how that would work, but, now, we have all kinds of ways to display those comments in writing and closed in glass, and I don't know. Or maybe a, a vid- not a video, but an audio that would say everything that people wanted to express, because we do have a lot of people that have a lot of heartfelt feelings. And so that was my recommendation to Alex. And that we wouldn't make it, but we would say, beautiful. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder. We wouldn't want to make it beautiful, nothing. It would just be the facts and the narrative so that people could read it, understand it maybe, and, and be informed exactly the history of this obelisk. Thank you.
Thank you. This came up a number of times two weeks ago, the desire to have expli- some kind of explanation text for, for people to understand what is there, what that is. And that, and I think, Exilda, you're, you're embellishing on that a little bit, and we may or may not feel we have enough time and enough ability to process everything you're saying because of the temporary nature of it and the complexity of it. However, I think you are, my sense is, and I don't want to speak for you, but that you're saying what I think many of us said two weeks ago, which is there has to be something there that says what this is and explains what, what this is and what's going to happen next. And I think it's just a question now of how we go about that. So thank you, thank you for your, your thoughts. O- other commissioners.
Alma has her hand up.
Oh, yeah, Alma.
Um, so I'm gonna try to be brief. This again has been an interesting meeting, and I take note. Thank you, everyone, for your public comment. I don't know that I do feel comfortable giving any type of recommendation. I think that we've heard loud and clear that we are not the appropriate body to be making this. If anything, I thank everyone for the opportunity to begin to start having these conversations because we are in a void. Chart has not started. The promises that have been made have been broken. And there isn't a clear path forward. And I personally feel disrespected in the fact that we don't have a full commission that we have been. As Exilda said, we gave written comments several times. We gave written comment to the mayor about what each one of us wanted to happen before any of this happened. And we haven't necessarily been taken into consideration. And we don't need to be, because we're not the voices that should really be at the forefront anyway, which is why we decided to have a chart process. That process has not happened, so my recommendation, if any, would be to do nothing.
And that would include even the most simple explanation about what chart is?
That's a complicated situation because I'm unclear, I think, what chart is until chart starts.
Right. Because of course, I mean, I think we, we all are very keen to make sure people participate in the chart process because it is open to the public. And so I hate to miss an opportunity to involve, involve all the people we've been hearing from, right, in this process.
I totally agree. It's just I think that devoid of doing something actively now, we are inviting more action. And I mean, what we've heard over time, that this land is not our land. And we are occupying it, and people will take it back if we don't do something.
Right. Thank you, Alma. Appreciate your thoughtful comments. Jorge, do you have any thoughts?
I was, I was ready for Adema really to say something, but pretty much, you know, I, I've said what I had to say at our last meeting. And I agree with everything everyone said, especially the, you know, putting a box or covering it. That's not up to us, because we are not to beautify or change what's there. However, and I've said it before, we are, I was not elected, I was appointed by the mayor, by a committee, I was selected because I wanted to serve. We are all volunteers. We want to do what's best. And what's best, although we don't have constituents, is our feelings as experts. What do we recommend, what do we think is best? But I will leave it up to the people, the recommendations they have. However, you know, what Exilda said, it makes perfectly sense. Whether we go back to the Adobe box, which Andrea mentioned last time, you know, covering it. It's still a box, the monument is still covered, it needs to be decided. I don't think it's up to anyone, any one of us to take action. You know, when Exilda was talking, I said, well, you know, color's important. As, 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 as everyone, how we dress and how we paint and how to relate to colors. Maybe we just, just paint the box black. I don't know. It's, it's grief. It's, it's, you know. And then put the sign saying, the four signs that Exilda was mentioning, and explanation why this is there. It's sorrow, it's painful, it's been a total disaster for a year and a half or two. And, and we, we can't do anything until the chart that takes action. So I don't know if it should be brown. It was very, very, people very strong with the brown color and all that. So I'm going to black now. Really, I mean, what do we do? Whether we paint it pink, blue, or black or brown, it's a color. But we just cannot leave the box, the plywood box, and we're not beautifying it. We are just making a statement. It's a, it's a can of, ten ga- ten gallons of paint and put some, some, some wording on it, what it meant. I'm going on what Exilda said. I don't want to take time to repeat myself. But that's about what we can do. And sometimes, you know, we, we know that the, the answer, you know, is no answer. But I'm giving you an answer. I think something needs to be done. We have a responsibility. We've been asked to make a recommendation, a temporary recommendation, until chart takes over. It could be a month, two, or three, or five. We don't know. But meantime, something should happen. It's really disgraceful what's happened with the monument. But it's also a disgrace to have that like the way it is right now. Thank you.
One thing that Valerie, there was a participant who, who spoke, Valerie Rangel, who mentioned just a QR, putting a QR code, and that could take people to the chart. Assuming we have a chart signup webpage, it could be as simple as that, a single QR code. And that's it. That's a thought, just a thought. Adelma.
Thank you, Chair Alex, and thank you commissioners, and thank you, everyone who is here to comment publicly. I understand trying to speak in a minute is next to impossible. And some of the structures that we're all trying to work within are, are difficult. So thank you for, for that. And I thank you for all of you who participated last time too, two weeks ago. And we heard a lot and synthesized and digest and are learning. And what stayed with me from the last meeting was the comment that hopefully, justice is in progress. Hopefully, truth and reconciliation is in progress. And be it those words, justice in progress, three words, as was recommended by someone in the last meeting, with the chart text and potentially a timeline. If we were to recommend something, I would keep it very simple. One, justice in progress. Two, a timeline and, and, and the chart text. And I know that that then means someone has to write that text. And I would say that that has to be done. It has to be indigenous-led, it has to be indigenous-centered, and it has to be indigenous voices that are part of that creation of the timeline. And the timeline is not just when the obelisk was built. Timeline goes all the way back to Ogapoe and the center of Tewa land and sacred space. So where does one start history, you know, gets into this? And I just have to reiterate what I said in the last meeting, which is that I believe this is maybe five thousand dollars. I believe that the mayor wants something to happen fairly quickly in the next couple of weeks before chart gets going, as you said, Chair Hannah, to extend until chart activates. So this is an interim issue, and Alma, I thank you because I don't feel comfortable either. I don't think we're the appropriate body to be making this decision. And this is complicated. So I apologize, Hannah. I don't think I'm giving you a recommendation. I, I, I'm not as clear on this as I would like to be, but it's, it's a complex issue for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Adelma. I think that was actually very thoughtful and synthesized a lot from the last meeting as well, which is important. I'd like to circle back to Alma, if we could. There's sort of the, the maxim, that, it seems like there's two ends of the approach. In, in any case, we want to keep it simple. Sounds like we only want to have text, if anything, maybe a QR code. And do you feel, Alma, given what you've heard, how comfortable are you with any kind of text or anything? Put something there that, that would be there for, say, two or three months or however long, till chart is really fully activated?
I mean, again, I think that it's hard to feel comfortable with anything. This is a super traumatic situation.
That's the wrong word. Yeah.
It's, it's difficult. I would like to hear more voices and hear some real solid timelines. And if the only thing we get out of this is knowing when chart is going to start, that would appease me for now.
Yeah, and I think that everyone feels anxious about that chart getting going. Pauline, on the chart process, it's been a little while since I've sort of investigated. Is there something on the city website right now that explains the chart process?
Chair Hannah, yes, there is something on a dedicated webpage on the cities. And I'll look that up, or we'll include it in the minutes. I don't know off the, the, the link off the top of my head, but it is there. And there is a signup. Oh, Erin's got it. City Attorney Erin's got her hand up. Sherry?
Yes, Chair Hannah, I've got it right in front of me. It is santafe nm.gov forward slash chart, C-H-A-R-T. And the resolution is also linked directly from that page.
Thank you. And Chair Hannah, there is signup page to receive notices related to the chart process solely. So if anyone does sign up, they're not getting every city press release, but things that are only related to chart. And again, as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, it's still under the procurement process. And hopefully that will conclude within the next month or so, and that's all I have information on.
Great. And just to be clear, that procurement process again is to hire a consultant to help lead the pro- to lead the process?
Correct. The request for proposals was to hire a consultant team to do all the three areas of convenings, the artist activations, and the cultural history series. Also required having a researcher and evaluator to help formulate unbiased questions for the, and for the survey and one-on-one interviews and evaluation forms.
Great. This is super helpful to know that, that there is, that this, I mean, I knew it existed, but it had been a while since I looked at it, so I'm glad to know. And I think, I think everyone here would like to emphasize the fact that the sooner the procurement process can happen and move this along as quickly as possible, people are obviously anxious to participate in this. And I highly recommend everyone that was on this meeting, all the public, go sign up right now on that. It is santa fe nm.gov backslash chart. Yeah, Jorge.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hannah, that is forward slash chart.
Forward slash, sorry. And my slash is mixed up. Forward slash chart. Thank you. Jorge?
Yes, you, you called on me, on Adelma, and Nelo was so kind to share her thoughts. What are your thoughts?
What are my thoughts?
Yes, yes.
I, well, I, my thoughts are, I wanted, I want us to come to a good consensus as a group. I want to, I think we all, I think we're all very thoughtful in this group. I think we all, as I said early on, have listened very carefully to public comment. I think we do this with, we have this meeting with, with great care and caution and respect. And I, I, I would, I personally feel like that needs some context, that the public, if I were coming from out of town and I walked onto the plaza and I didn't know much about Santa Fe history, I wouldn't learn anything. I wouldn't know anymore. I wouldn't know anymore about the complexity of the history, the pain, the, 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 the heartache around this issue. And I would want to know that. If I were visiting Santa Fe, I wouldn't, I don't want just the red and green chili. I want to know all of it. I want to know more about this town, right? And I think we don't give enough credit to people coming here. And, and this is who we go for locals as well. I mean, I think there are plenty of locals that do not know anything about the complexity of this situation. And I don't think, I don't feel comfortable for us to write something. I even think a process of getting historians to try to write something is too difficult. But if we can at least get them to this page of the website and say, we're trying, we're trying to have a process here, and we're trying to have healing, I think it's informative. I think it's important. I think it's important for people to engage. And I'm thankful for all the comments. And, and I, and I'm sorry, I apologize for being a stickler and having this one-minute rule. We could, we could be here all night and talk about this and still be contemplating and, and worrying and, and thinking about this, right? So I don't want to, by, by having that limit, I don't want to minimize the voices we've heard. But I, but I hate to miss an opportunity to educate more, to get more involvement. And so that's why I, I continue to propose a simple sign in front of that box that allows anyone, anyone that was on this call, on this Zoom meeting, anyone that just happens to be walking by, or anybody that goes there. I've walked down to the plaza now every week. Want, you know, my, my office is a few blocks away. I go there and I go trying to understand it. And I stand there in front of it. I have all these photos on my camera of the box and its permutations. And I, and I wonder about it. And so I guess I just feel like I want a method, if we can, if there's anything we can do, it is to help guide the city manager and the mayor to something helpful for the public. That, that's all, that's all I want. Does anybody want to try to make a recommendation? Or do we want to just leave it in city manager and the mayor's hands to do what they want? Because I want to, I want to remind, remind you all that we were asked to make a recommendation. And that does not mean that that's what will happen, to be clear. And I think if we don't make a recommendation, then we may be giving up something there too. Alma, go ahead.
So I, I guess that's kind of where I was leading and saying that I think we shouldn't, maybe recommendation to do nothing. There's clearly, and it's unclear to me actually who it's coming from, but there's clearly a desire for it to look different because someone is uncomfortable with it. Maybe that discomfort will move the process forward.
That's, that's well put, Alma. Thank you. Anybody else about a recommendation? The Alma's recommendation is to recommend that nothing be done. Is that clear? Am I saying that correctly, Alma? Because I think it's important that we're clear that any message that goes to the city manager and the mayor is very clear.
Hi, sorry, to be clear, my recommendation, I'm proposing that we recommend that no beautification process be entered into until chart is complete.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's, thank you for the wording. Anyone else have any comments on that? I agree with you, Alma, that this process at least, I think, is activating people to begin this engagement process, and I think that's worthwhile in and of itself. Yeah, Jorge. You're on mute.
You're muted.
Oh, okay. I agree with, with, you know, with no recommendation as far as beautification. But I think we have a responsibility. We're in this committee, and the, the city mayor, the city and the mayor has asked us to do something. And, and if we, if we just leave it alone, but we have a sign, and I love the idea of justice in progress, something, just a simple statement, not to copy what Adelma said, but something similar to that. But something should be said. People walk by the plaza, by the, by this, the obelisk, you know, this, by this structure, every day. So what, like you were saying, what, what are they going to think? What is happening here? You know, it's a sore, it's a, it's something sore that's there that, that either has to be removed or something to be done with it. So they're asking for us to make a, 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 to respond, reply. So I'm saying, let's at least put a sign saying something to the effect. So I'm saying, let's at least put a sign saying something to the effect that what's happening.
Thank you, Jorge. Exilda, do you have any other comments or thoughts? You're on mute too, sorry.
You're muted.
Exilda, hold on. Let me see if I can help you. Give me just a second.
I think I've got it. Can you hear me now? No, I've said, I've stated, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Exilda. And just to remind everyone, Exilda was hoping for a bit more information. And Adelma, I'd like to end with you, ideally, to wrap it up. And if you want to make a motion and/or we'll go back to Alma's potential motion, and then we'll have a vote.
Thank you, Chair Hannah. I guess I'm going to take a hybrid approach to Alma's strong counsel and Jorge's as well, and make a recommendation that no beautification happen until the chart process is in progress. And a sign be placed that has the QR code for chart and a bit of the narrative about what the chart process includes.
Any questions about that? I think we could, I think that could be, we could make that a motion and vote on it, Adelma, if you would like to.
I'm happy to repeat it.
Adelma, I just need the very end. I got everything up to, and a narrative about, was it the chart process?
Yes, the language from the chart proposal.
From the resolution?
Thank you for the resolution.
So.
May I read it back? So because this is very important. May I read it back to make sure I have it correct, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure. Unless Adelma wants to rephrase it, or do you want to just go ahead and have it paraphrased back, Adelma?
Do you want to hear what I have written, and you can tell me if it's right or wrong?
Sure.
My fuzzy brain. Thank you, Elizabeth.
You said you want to take a hybrid approach to the recommendation. That no beautification happen until the chart process is in process. I'm not sure that's exactly what you want to say. And that a sign be placed with a QR code for chart and narrative regarding the language from the chart resolution.
Yeah, that is definitely a clunky motion.
You, I mean, you have to tell me.
I know Adelma's working on it right now. Let's give her, let's give her a moment.
I move that no beautification of the obelisk in the plaza occur until the chart process is underway. And that a sign be placed on or at the obelisk with language from the chart proclamation, giving context for the box around the obelisk and providing the QR code for chart. So public comments can be made.
Thank you, Adelma.
And I hope I'm done with the motion, but I hope that the website allows for public comment if the QR code goes. So maybe Erin.
I think my understanding is that you can sign up to then be part of the process of chart.
Chair Hannah, Mayor Arora Nasco, it does allow you to be a part of the updates. And then you have to join the chart process from there.
So if we could amend that, Elizabeth, to just QR code to the chart landing page for signup to begin to be a part of that process or something along those lines.
Do you agree to that amendment, Adelma?
I do. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Great. Do we, are we good on this, or do we need to read it? Jorge, do you have a question?
I think we've talked about this long enough. I think it's a fair answer, and I so moved that we approve it.
Okay.
I just need a second. She, Adelma, made the motion, so we need a second.
Oh, would you like to second, Jorge?
I do.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So here we go. Let's have a roll call.
Alex Hannah?
Yes.
Adelma Hanasco?
Yes.
Jorge Bernal?
Yes.
Alma Castro?
Yes.
Exelda Trahio de Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. I know this is a tricky process, and I think I'm proud of us for coming to a conclusion that I think it will be helpful to the public. And again, hopefully lots of people will participate in the chart process. Let's see, what's, I think if there's any other matters from the committee, I don't believe we have any other matters. We've talked about other things two weeks ago. If there's anything else? All right, great. Yes, Elizabeth?
Alma has her hand up. Well, and I guess we addressed this a little while ago, but there's no kind of response on the new commissioners. And Alex, thank you for continuing to help us build quorum.
Yeah, so are you asking a direct question, Alma?
I think I am.
Yeah, so go ahead and, let's go ahead and rephrase it. And do you want to ask it of Pauline or?
Yes, I'll ask it of Pauline. Pauline, do we have any updates on the vacancies on the Arts Commission?
Chair Hannah, Commissioner Castro, yes, we will be, I will be meeting again with the mayor to look at the recommendations for the vacancies. And so that should happen within the next week or so. And then we have to go through the appointment to get them on to the calendar.
For city council, for the governing body, correct?
Appointment. So that will take, you know, I would estimate two months to be safe.
Thank you.
And as long as we're talking about that, at this point, we do not have another formal meeting of this group, I believe, until September because we had switched to quarterly. I think I would highly recommend, and I think I have the full support of everyone on here, to get us back to normal cycle of meetings. I think having these emergency meetings is very stressful on this group of volunteers and probably stressful on the staff. And I think if we could get back, I would highly recommend to the city manager and the mayor and you, Mr. Brown, to get us back to regular scheduled meetings, ideally would be in person soon. Thank you. Yes, Elizabeth?
I just, well, Adelma has her hand up. Your members should speak first.
Okay, go ahead, Adelma, and then Elizabeth.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Thank you, Chair Hannah. Given that we're probably not going to meet for a bit, in the last meeting, Pauline did mention to us that there's a proposal or interest in potential participation on the part of the commission in some, forgive me if my verb is wrong, but honoring or recognizing of the old Santa Fe Trail and that monument. And I just need to say that I feel very strongly that if there is any recognizing of that monument, it be indigenous-centered and with indigenous voices of what was happening from the indigenous perspective when the old Santa Fe Trail came in, so that we can have a history that includes more voices and the voices of those who've been here and on native land. So for the record, I just want to state my position there. I've been thinking a lot about the question that was posed, and it didn't sit well with me. So thanks for letting me circle back to that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Adelma. And that reminds me to say that we also, Pauline and I and a panel of people have recommended a city historian to the mayor, and we hope that that person will be able to start July 1st. And I think some of that will be helpful for this kind of, this kind of thing. Yes, anyone, any other commissioner, any other business to the committee commissioners? Yes, Elizabeth, go ahead.
I just want to caution and Ms. McSherry, correct me if I'm wrong, but your process of having everyone email to you, Mr. Chair, their comments creates a rolling quorum when you do that.
And I have not done that. I have not done that.
But you asked in the meeting that they all email you their comments?
No, I did not. No, I did not. Have I spoken to individual commissioners one-on-one? Yes. But I have never asked the entire committee at once for comments.
I believe that is what was said at the last meeting, Mr. Chair. But just, I just want to caution you, I just want to caution you that it creates a rolling quorum.
Believe me, that's all we ever talk about in this commission is rolling.
You just need to go through or the process would be to send.
Believe me, if anyone knows about rolling quorum, it's me.
Okay.
I have not done that, and I've never done that.
Sorry. Sorry to interject now here. We're speaking over each other, and that won't be good for a minute. Sorry.
I just want to be very clear about that, that I have never asked everyone to send me emails all at once or anything along those, along those lines. Yeah.
Send them, okay. Erin, hand up. Ms. McSherry has her hand up.
I think the chair noticed. So Chair Hannah, members, I did just want to comment about the in-person meetings. I did follow up with the AG's office to see if they had any updates to their guidance that was issued at the beginning of the pandemic. And they are recommending that we continue with virtual or hybrids. Hybrids are very staff-time and resource-heavy to do the hybrids because that means we have to allow the public to attend virtually and in person. So that's why I think for most committees, at least for like the next month or so, as we work our way through hopefully the end of public health orders and things like that, or at least, you know, capacity limitations and that kind of thing. I think most of our committees are going to be still virtual. We're going to try some hybrid governing body meetings. And it's going to take a lot of new technology in order to accommodate that. So our first attempt at that is going to be next Wednesday. We're probably going to try some staff meetings in the interim just to make sure the technology works. But it is complicated to both have people in person and online. And hopefully ultimately, we'll have the technology to allow for that in general. You know, so that public can attend remotely and in person, depending on what the ability is of that member of the public. So it is something we're working towards, but it is complicated. And then also, there is no official updated guidance from the AG's office, but they basically told me, as long as we have these public orders in place that say people should stay home, they're totally comfortable with us continuing virtual. And they recommended we not do it without a virtual element, at least, so at least hybrid. So that is where we're at. So I know people are really, some people would really like to be in person entirely sooner than later, but we are still working our way through the, hopefully the end of the pandemic. And then on the, the timing of emails is not so important as the subject matter and the number of people involved. So I would just, it is hard, it's very hard to not be able to communicate outside of public meeting. It's just a challenge that we all have to work with.
Yes. And I just wanted to clarify that I understood very well that the rolling quorum issue. And I appreciate what you're saying about the virtual meetings. I congratulate this group. I think we've been effective virtually. And we do appreciate the ability for the public to be with us. So I completely understand that. And obviously, we'd rather meet monthly virtually than not meet monthly. Any other, anyone else, any other comments or final business? Thank you all. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your careful note-taking. Thank you, Pauline and staff. Thank you, Rich Brown, for being here. And thank you to the public for all your thoughtful comments. We look forward to this recommendation going to the city manager and the mayor, and I hope that they take the recommendation. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.